It is 7:02 PM, and at this time I will call to order the June 19th, 2017 meeting of the City Council. At this time, Council President Levy and Council Vice President Duncan are both absent, and we need to elect a President Pro Tem until such time as President Levy returns or is able to get here. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of President Pro Tem. Ms. Blakely?
I would like to nominate Mark Preschel for the position of President Pro Tem.
Mark Preschel has been nominated for the position of President Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations? One last call for nominations, and I don't have the little box here, so you're gonna have to wave your hand at me if you wish to get my attention. So, a third and final call for nominations for the position of President Pro Tem. All right, seeing none, therefore by acclamation, Counselor Preschel, you are the President Pro Tem for tonight's meeting.
Hopefully, this will be brief.
And I forgot to call the roll, so if you could call the roll before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we have called the roll?
We have five counselors present with President Levy and Vice President Duncan absent. We do have a quorum.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming, folks. Under special orders of the day announcements, we have a proclamation recognizing June as Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and I think Sheila's got it ready right now. Thank you.
An official proclamation from the City of Beloit. Whereas Alzheimer's is a type of dementia that causes problems with memory, thinking, and behavior, and whereas Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia but not a normal part of aging, and whereas Alzheimer's disease affects more than 5 million Americans today with more than 110,000 in the state of Wisconsin alone, and whereas Alzheimer's is at the forefront of biomedical research, and this research will lead to new treatments, and whereas local support is available to persons with dementia as well as their caregivers through the Alzheimer's and Dementia Alliance of Wisconsin and the A D R C of Rock County. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the month of June 2017 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in the City of Beloit, and be it further proclaimed that the Beloit City Council urges citizens to learn the facts, keep your brain healthy, and participate in the Do What You Love Longest Day campaign on June 21st, 2017 to help raise awareness of Alzheimer's, dated this 19th day of June 2017. Kevin D. Levy, President. Do we have anyone here to accept this proclamation?
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Barb Rutherford.
And you're from?
I'm actually from Beloit, but I'm on the Alzheimer's Association Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Under public hearings, we have Item 4A, Resolution approving the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, approving the 2017 CDBG budget, and appropriating funds necessary for the operation and administration of the 2017 CDBG program. Counselor DeForest will need to recuse herself from this item due to a conflict of interest with her employer, so I think she's leaving now. Okay. And Julie?
So, you did approve the 2017 budget and annual action plan last November. However, when Sheila DeForest abstained at that meeting, we asked her why and determined that she was working part-time for Family Services, and since she did vote on the funding priorities, we were taking this back through the process. So, you had more recently re-approved the funding priorities, and then we brought the action plan and budget for you tonight. There was a slight delay in getting that to you because of the rental registration fees, but we've now basically zeroed out that program income line item. But while we were taking a look at the budget, it did allow us an opportunity to look at how much money could be allocated to public service programs. So, there's a 15% cap set, and it's based on your grant plus their prior year program income, which when we approve your budget normally in November, we don't have that exactly figured out. But since we were doing this in '17, we could take a look at last year's program income, and so it did allow us to increase the amount awarded to public service from 11475 to 141496. So, we did take an opportunity to increase all of the public service sub-grantees a little bit, some up to what they asked for, some at least further along. We did also put funding in for Resources Navigator. That has come up time and time again, and it was something we also discussed at the neighborhood meetings last week, that there is a need, a strong need in our community for somebody who can help people figure out what their needs are. So, we put funding in that for '17 right away so that we have funding available as we go through these neighborhood efforts. There's also a minor change in the amount of program administration, decreasing from 1521 to 141496, and this is due to the reduction of projected program income for this year because that cap is based on this year's program income, that reduction related to the rental registration program revenue declining. And so, those are the major changes in the budget. There are no changes to the annual action plan, except the effect that the budget is part of the annual action plan. So, this is on your agenda for a public hearing and action this evening. So, we've gone through the 30-day public review, published a notice in the Beloit Daily News, the Stateline News, and also had the notice on our website. We have not heard from any citizens so far, but I know at least one person is here to speak on that tonight.
Okay. So, I'll open the public hearing for this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item should come forward and state their name and address for the record. Does anyone wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Paul Dion at 635 Harrison Avenue here in Beloit. I am the new president for the Stateline Literacy Council, and I'm here with half of my new board, and we are just here to speak on the CDBG because it is a vital source of income for our program. We provide English-language classes for members of the community as well as GED preparation work in Spanish, and we provide a vital service to the community, we believe, to help people increase their earning potential. We've received funding from CDBG over the past years, and it's been an essential source of funding for us to continue doing the important work we're doing for the community. So, we're here tonight to speak on behalf of Stateline Literacy Council. We've recently moved to the library. We have a nice new facility there. We've been starting a new partnership with the library since January, and the future is bright for us.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? This is the last call for anyone wishing to speak on this item. With no other speakers, I will move to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Who's there?
I'm sorry. After we have a second, do we have a chance to discuss?
We have time for discussion.
Thank you.
And we have a second from Foreback. So, can we have any discussion there?
Yes, I just wanted to speak up, thank you, speak up in favor of Stateline Literacy. It is a vital program for our community, and I have seen so many people benefit by it. When I was working at the library, I encountered folks outside of the building who told me how enthusiastic they were about it and told me in English how much they were learning. So, I urge the council to vote in support of it.
Anybody else have anything to say? Shall we put it to a vote, then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Counselor DeForest can come back in and rejoin us.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is public comments, and we have reached that point in the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless an item you are speaking to is already on the agenda. We may act on your request at a future meeting, or we may refer the speaker to staff for assistance. And we would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making any personal attacks. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I have a list here of, I think there's three people who have filed a participation sheet. I'll take them in the order I find them. The first person is Jamie Carpenter. State your name and address, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Jamie Carpenter, 1821 Harrison, Beloit. Forgive me, I'm losing my voice. I'm here because about a little over a week ago, I started a petition to end panhandling in the city. I think it is a serious problem, and I have signatures here, and there's also an online petition that many people have signed. I've got, in a week, I've got 131 people. Some people aren't sure how to fill it out online, so it was a little difficult, but I think if I were to leave it open longer, I'd get a lot more signatures. There's lots of comments under it, people who went through similar situations like I have myself where they were cornered by an aggressive panhandler. I had one last year, and shortly afterwards, I came to a meeting to talk to you guys about it, where he stuck his hands in my vehicle while I was stuck at a stoplight. A couple of weeks ago, I was swore at and threatened as I drove through the intersection of Riverside and Henry Avenue. Last week, I went to the Merrill Neighborhood Listening Session, and I spoke with some officers regarding that. It looks like maybe they were hearing the public, you know, they're wanting them to come forward and like start doing something about it. I know it's a fine line to, as far as legal issues and the panhandling, but they're also littering, loitering, using profanity, stopping traffic, touching people's vehicles, tapping on their windows. From some of the comments that we got, apparently, there may be a group of them. I don't know the specifics exactly, but there may be a group of them that is working out of the motel on Riverside. So, I know Friday night, an officer stopped the gentleman that used the profanity towards us. He was stopped, and from the comments I've read on the scanner page and that he was asked to leave, I don't know if that's true either, but he has since not returned. And I want everyone to understand that I'm not trying to be nasty or anything like that. It's a safety issue, not only for driving, but a safety issue for people in their vehicles with their family, you know, because some of these people are getting aggressive. And, you know, people are very concerned about their family and being able to drive through the area. Not only that, but it's an eyesore when you see all the trash left behind from them because they're not cleaning it up, and I know other people litter too, but there is quite a bit of trash left over. And also, people are concerned about what the money is being used for, if it is, in fact, drugs, you know, I don't know, I'm not in their personal life.
Jamie, can you conclude? Can you?
Yes, I can. So, what I'm asking of the board is to consider an ordinance of some kind, maybe something like Madison, I know that's been discussed online, how they have curbed their panhandling. So, maybe if you guys could take another look at that and see what you can do for us, we would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next person on the list here is Paul Dion. Oh, you spoke, Paul spoke during the public hearing. And then, the next person on the list here is Tracy Bliss, and I believe you have something here. Okay, so, just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, Tracy Bliss, 2210 James Kelly Lane, Beloit. So, the handouts are a petition, online petition results. I'm speaking about the logo. There's only one color copy, and that color copy actually has an attachment that the other nine do not, and I apologize. The reason is, I had asked volunteers to meet me at Bushland Pecs Wednesday to maybe go out and get the petition signed, and one person met and did do that for me. She got 59 signatures, so that's attached to the color one, but I just got that literally before the meeting today, so I wasn't able to make copies. So, with the petition, I was able to get, with online petition, 122 signatures in one week. Unfortunately, 24 of those are not from Beloit, so it would be 157 total. Then, with the additional 59 that my volunteer received, it would be 181 total in one week. Just on behalf of the Beloit community who may not be happy with the logo, I'm just asking that the City Council rescind their May 15 decision to move forward with implementing the new logo, leave the logos as they are, and make a request for proposals that defines design criteria and open it up to design submissions that meet that criteria. Just give our local artists a chance to be the designer of the city logo, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. That concludes public comments. Is there anybody who didn't sign up or wishes to provide public comment tonight during the section of the agenda? Okay, I don't see that. We'll close the, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Pardon? Oh, there is somebody, okay. State your name and address, please.
I'm Deidrea Hodges at 1219 Ninth Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. We're on behalf of a, we're starting a local nonprofit called Switch Lanes. We've spoke to a few people here. We are looking to have a public forum, and this is Carmella Hyde, she's our president. We're looking to have a public forum. We'll be doing a panel discussion this week. We're getting some things ironed out. We also have our national president here, Anthony McIntyre. We also have a handout, some of our flyers, some more information. We just really wanted to introduce ourselves to the community and let you guys know some of the things that we have coming up. August 20th, we're planning a community event here. It's a peace in the streets event. We're hoping to get some backing from the city. We're also looking to bring out the community to stop some of the recent violence and lower some of the crime that we have going on. So, we just wanted to introduce ourselves and get some information out to you all.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. President. May I ask the lady something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Hi, Carmella, hi, Deidrea, good to see you both. You mentioned that you have an event coming up this week. Could you tell us where that is and whether it's open to the public?
Yes.
Actually, we have rescheduled it for Wednesday, the 28th, and it is open to the community. And as much as we can, we will be touching on four bases as far as education, entrepreneurship, economic development, and legal justice.
What time on the 28th?
It will be from 10 to 12 at 250 Garden Lane at the old courthouse.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak during this participation? Nobody? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And Lori?
All items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Are there any items a council member wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Nobody? Okay, do we have a motion?
I so move.
Okay, the motion is to approve Items 6A through 6C. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposed. Four passes, 5-0. Under Section 7, licenses?
7A is a resolution approving late renewal alcohol beverage licenses for the license period July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2018. What you have before you tonight is the stragglers of late applications. There were six or seven on your list whose license will expire June 30, and the Alcohol License Beverage Control Commission reviewed them last week and is recommending approval 5-0.
Is there any motions?
I move to accept, please.
Any second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
And 7B is a resolution approving a new Class B beer and Class C wine license for Fresco La Casa de la Fajitas LLC. They're doing business as Fresco Fajita House located at 315 State Street with Jennifer L. Dominguez as the agent. This is effective for license period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. What you have before you this evening is a new license as a new business. It used to be Mammalooz and has been operating as Fresco Fajita House for a few months now, and James Bennett has relinquished his liquor license. He has had his LLC dissolved with the state. So, at this point, Fresco Fajita House has all of the legal licensing and has met all the requirements. The Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee reviewed this last week at their meeting and is recommending approval 5-0.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I so move.
A second?
Second.
Second by Foreback. Do we have any discussion? Shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? There are no opposition, it's approved 5-0. And now, I will link this fine chair to Mr. Levy. Hope you didn't get a ticket. In the way you. You know those Illinois people, you know? We'd still be there.
Thank you, Mark.
Right here, we just finished licenses, we're at ordinances. You made it just in time. Hey.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thanks to Counselor Preschel for manning and doing a great job, and thank for all the other councils for being patient as I was making my way down here. So, no, I didn't get a ticket, so. So, we're at Item?
8A.
8.
8A.
Okay. Item 8A, please.
8A is an ordinance to create Section 14.015-6 and 18.01-4D, to amend Section 1506-4B-1, and to repeal Section 1401-5-1 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to waiver of fees, special annual events, and outdoor vending for a Beloit International Film Festival event. This is first reading.
City Manager Luther, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have before you this evening a potential ordinance change to accommodate the Beloit International Film Festival and a special request for an event that they are planning located in the general vicinity of the 500 and 600 blocks of Third Street on July 15. The request is to allow a waiver of fees and an ordinance change to allow for the sale, consumption, and possession of alcohol, and an ordinance change to allow outdoor vending. I just wanted to point out that I had an initial conversation with one of the fine representatives of this group who is also planning an event this summer. Didn't quite, I did not have an opportunity to work with them to get through all of the details, to present their request at the same time, but certainly prior to August 20th, would anticipate being able to move forward in a similar fashion as this. In this regard, for example, we do have a license of insurance, additional coverage for this event, and all of the applicable permits and licenses have been requested to the best of my knowledge. This is in keeping to the similarity, although it is prior to my time, of Riverfest, other community-wide type events that are no longer taking place. And the way our ordinance is written is specific to the actual event and event organizers that are coming forward. So, that is why the staff report is prepared as such with an actual ordinance change specific to these providers rather than leaving them open. The council has an opportunity for every specific special event to take specific action. So, I will say that while this is on the agenda for first reading, given the timing of the event, the organizers have requested that you consider, if upon approval, to suspend the rules and have the first and second reading so they can advertise and market and move forward prior to the implementation. A member of the BIF board and the BIF staff, if I may say that-ish, Max is in the audience and can speak to any specific questions you might have about the event that's being anticipated. With that, I'd stand for any questions.
Is there, first of all, a motion? Let's do it this way, to suspend the rules first, so we at least get it on the table for discussion.
I so move.
The motion by Foreback is there? Second? Second by Preschel. Counselor DeForest, you're on.
Thank you. I'm wondering if Max could speak to the measures that will be taken to control how liquor is sold at this event. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. Liquor will be sold through Tommy Hankins. He is going to be providing licensed bartenders for the event.
And how will you control access to minors or?
Wristbands. So, at the gates, we will have wristbands given to, well, everyone carded, obviously, and then those 21-plus will be given a wristband that identifies them as being able to consume.
Okay, so when you say carded at the gate, you'll have a one-point entry gate?
Correct.
And all people will be carded at the gate?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, I apologize, that is inconsistent with the prior site plan that was discussed. Staff had suggested that a beer garden would be appropriate and that this would not be open for the entire area for the consumption of alcohol, that the alcohol was to be in a specified area. So, I apologize if there's been a misunderstanding, but I think that staff was pretty clear about the fact that even at street dance, a beer garden is typically established.
May I?
Wait, can I just? Street dance, I don't know if there's a beer garden, I just, is there just?
If I could point out, Mr. President, the ordinance requires it. Street dance is not in conformance with the ordinance, so street dance will have to make sure that they comply with the ordinance. This was done to match the similar allowance of alcohol. When it's on city property, it needs to be in a barricaded or fenced area away from the rest of the event. And so, if you want to allow alcohol outside of that, I'm gonna call it a beer garden area because that's how it's generally framed, then this ordinance will have to be amended to allow that. But when alcohol has been on city property or parks, it's been, the ordinance requires that it be in a separate area, so.
Which, if I can follow up, is part of my concern because the ordinance clearly stipulates that, but we've been allowing the street dance to operate not in that fashion. So, I just want to make sure we're not getting away from, this was intended to protect access to minors, and I'm concerned that we just don't get in the practice of having events where we're lackadaisical about enforcing this aspect of the ordinance. And your response doesn't really give me much confidence that you're planning to, so.
Well, what I'm hearing is a kind of confusion of what you're saying and what the city manager was saying, because she's saying a beer garden, and to Counselor DeForest's point, you're saying people are gonna be carded as they come in, similar to the street dance. So, I guess when we end here tonight, I want to make sure that we're consistent across the board. So, that means if we approve this and say that we want this event to have a beer garden, and I know it's been years in practice, but then we need to be consistent across the board and figure out what do we do for street dance, and I'm looking at the executive director up there and making sure that, because if we have an ordinance in place, I think they're in place for a reason, and we need to make sure that everyone is treated and following the same ordinance.
And to address the confusion, we were originally planning this on a private lot, and so that was understood, but then moving it to this public that- And so that was understood, but then moving it to this public, that's, I guess, where the confusion comes in. Because the DBA does do a streetwide fencing off of the street as the beer garden, so.
So then my question is, is you're looking for us to suspend the rules for approval this evening. Is all this, I don't want to approve this until everything is worked out. Everyone's understanding what we're expecting, where we're at. You may need to go back and talk to people to say, no, we got to have a beer garden. I'm not comfortable now with the confusion approving this until we get all the facts of exactly what is going to be. You understand?
Yeah, I have an idea for a compromise, because I know you want to plan the event and promote it and advertise it, and I get that, and it's coming up quickly. Could we consider approving all the aspects of what's been requested except the liquor dispensation until the next meeting?
Or can we say, or can we say approve, approve it and with staff, working with staff to finalize, to work it out? I mean, I think we can, I'm comfortable with moving forward and directing the city manager to make sure that what we expect is carried out. I'm comfortable with that because I understand the timing of it. Let me get Councilor Forbeck in first.
I just want to comment. The original, at least the first six years of Riverfest, we never had a beer garden. I mean, you had to pay to get in and.
You had a wristband.
No, we didn't have a wristband. You just, you just were, yeah, those were the first six years. So, for whatever it's worth, there has been that history. And I'm not so sure why we didn't have a beer garden, but nobody told us that we had to. So this is back in the 80s. So, I mean, there are issues, I think, that you need to take a look at in a big way for whatever comes up.
Beth wants to speak.
If I could, the ordinance right now requires the beer garden. If that's what the desire of the council is to have, you can approve the ordinance in its form now. And they would have to comply with that ordinance, which is kind of what we expect for any alcohol activities on public property. So approving it tonight wouldn't necessarily need more negotiation. We can certainly inform them of the expectations of the ordinance, but it does clearly state that the alcohol has to be in a fenced or barricaded area where it can be consumed, sold, and possessed.
And that's all existing language, right?
It is.
Yeah.
We were simply adding their event, one weekend day annually, to the list of exceptions for alcohol on city property.
Hey, Council Blakely?
Yes, I wanted to ask you, Max, hearing what the council is saying this evening, do you feel that, do you believe that this could be included, the beer garden? So that if we go ahead and go forward with this tonight, that your group can work it into your plans? I know it's not a legal assurance, but I just want to see if you feel that can be done.
Yes, absolutely. We'll make sure to accommodate that.
Very good.
I have a question. I'm Anna Kelly, I'm Vice President of the Board. Couldn't the entire event be a beer garden? If it's all fenced in?
I had actually, I had sent an email in May, I just confirmed that I had, that I stated that the beer garden had to be separated. And given the length of the event and given the location that, and that there was a family movie, I believe, being shown that evening, that the alcohol needed to be completely separated, and that was my expectation all along. So I was not directly involved in all of the conversations with staff and the evolution of the location, but that certainly has always been my expectation.
So then you can't consume it outside of that either? It's not just buying it?
Correct.
Kind of like going to a supper club and you have a lounge and you have a restaurant.
Yeah, but you can consume in a restaurant.
And I'll still, I'll still go back to my original point, that if we're requiring them to have a beer garden, then we need to make sure we're consistent across the board. And if there's any other organizations that's having similar events, then we need to make sure that our beer garden is in place. She?
I heard what you said about that it's in the ordinance and it should be expected, and that you would ask staff to just follow up and make sure. I guess from my comfort level, we're voting on this as a city council, and we're saying we have confidence in their ability to follow through on the ordinance. I'm not feeling that confidence right now. And I would prefer that we wait to vote on the aspects related to dispensing alcohol until I hear from them exactly how they plan to separate and barricade that issue. We would ask that question of anybody else that came to us. And for them to come before us and have no idea what we're even talking about, to me, is not a good enough reason to just go ahead and vote for it because we're in a hurry. I think we can wait on authorizing the dispensation of liquor at our next meeting. We'll have time before that.
Kevin?
Councilor Anderson and Council Presso.
Yeah, Beth, isn't it, they have to comply with what we approved tonight anyway, so that shouldn't be an issue, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We were talking about suspending the rules. We don't have to suspend the rules, we can just do the first reading and they'll come back to us at our next meeting for approval. That would be the normal course of events, and if that's, that's what it sounds like you're saying you want to do.
I'm saying not to suspend the rules for the aspect related to dispensing alcohol. I understand that the request was to suspend the rules so that they could start advertising the event and promoting the event. And clearly, I would hope you would think you could have this family event without liquor served. I get disturbed that every, we think every event has to have liquor at it. But we should be able to vote on that and wait until our next meeting to make sure that we feel confident that you have the capacity to control the sale of alcohol at this event. I'm not going to vote for that until I feel confident that you do.
But let me just, and I get that. Let me try to clarify it here. If we vote to suspend the rules and we move this forward with approval, then, and I'll lean to the city attorney to correct me, they have no choice. You see what I'm saying, that the ordinance, now that we know that it's required, that they really have no choice. That if we approve this tonight, they have no choice, they have to do it. So they have to go back and come up with a way to say, we're going to do it, or come back to us and say, we can't make the beer garden work, so we're not going to do it. They have no choice, so I'm just, my, your concern is valid. But I'm thinking before anything is issued, they're going to make sure that they can do this. So with the ordinance in place, we enforce the ordinance which says they have to have a beer garden. I'm not only concerned about this event, but I'm either looking down the road to one of the biggest, one of the biggest events in the summer, and I'm looking at Sean and saying, we need to make sure now that we start that conversation, because I'm not going to do the one-offs. Will we approve, this group has to follow the ordinance, this group does not. I mean, I'm comfortable with saying that if we move this forward tonight, by them knowing the ordinance, they have no choice but to follow it. City Manager?
Correct. And I think that one of the distinctions, and I don't mean to overcomplicate the issue, but with street dance, when it's being held downtown, there are physical barriers on the sides, and they do use fencing and barricades at either end. So I know that that is also a public street, but it's also a city-sponsored event, which means the liability and insurance coverages are different than when we are allowing a nonprofit to use a public street for a fundraiser for their event. But I think in this particular case, when you talk about fencing or barricading, the entire, they would have to, even theoretically speaking, they would have to fence or barricade the entire physical area because there aren't natural borders there. And given the nature and length of the event, I at least had, and I perhaps had not been as clear as I could have been, but the intention was that only a portion of that physical space needed to be barricaded or fenced for the purposes of a beer garden, whereas they would be allowing access to the remainder of the space. So there are some differences between those two events that I think are significant as we move forward. But in any case, I think that the council has been clear that for this particular event sponsored by a nonprofit on a public street, that the expectation would be, and I can see where the pure reading of the ordinance, one could envision theoretically the entire barricaded or fenced portion. I don't believe that was the intent of the language necessarily. And certainly, I think the expectation now and what could be accommodated is a portion of that space outside of the fire lane for that exclusive purpose.
Mr. President?
Council Blakely?
Yes, I see you both nodding, but I just wanted to ask you, Anna, Ms. Vice President, having heard this additional information, do you feel like, Max, that you can go back to your group and represent this with the understanding that you must have the smaller area as a beer garden?
Yeah, if we need to have a beer garden, we'll make beer garden happen and make sure it's fenced in and we have people at the door making sure they don't take liquor outside of that space. I mean, that's what it says, that's what we'll do.
Very good. Alrighty.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I want to make sure that we are clear, I want to make sure, I mean, because we had good discussion here. We have the ordinance in place. Councilor DeForest, are you comfortable with the fact, and I'm not just singing, y'all, but I want to make sure that everyone is comfortable as we move forward. We could always bring that piece back. I mean, you said you have time, we can always bring it back to make sure, because I want to make sure that when we move forward.
I'm not comfortable suspending the rules. It still concerns me, Ms. Kelly, the response was, if we have to. You're still not, you have to, it's not an if about it.
That's the rule, that's what we'll do. If we need to set up a separate area, I mean, just like we have to move from that spine road to the other road.
I'm not comfortable suspending the rules, but that's fine if I'm allowed on this.
Is that what the motion second is for, is to suspend?
Suspend the rules and then move for approval.
I'm sure I remembered that right now.
Right, before we move to the actual.
Kind of lost track of things.
The second reading.
Mr. President, you do need a vote of five in order to suspend the rules, just for your information.
Okay.
Can I ask, I need one question too. We're not voting on the ordinance, the ordinance already exists.
Right.
We're just voting for what?
You're voting on the addition of the BIF event within each of the ordinances that are needing to be changed. So you have the one that involves the waiver of the fees, the ordinance that allows alcohol to be consumed on city property, and then the ordinance that allows vending city property. So the addition of the BIF event to those ordinances is what you're voting on today.
Okay.
Just the addition of the one and two.
Okay. All right.
Council Presso, do you have anything? Council Forbeck?
Yes, I move to.
We already have a motion, we already have a motion and a second. Is there any other further discussion on this, this ordinance? I, my still number one concern, not so much with this event, but with the consistency with the other events. And I get where the street dance is a city event and it's downtown and we have, but from the general public's point of view, it could be viewed that we're showing a little leniency for one group or the other, even though we may not, but consistency, and for, you know, people looking, they're going to say, well, why the street dance get to get away with it? And I don't want to go down that road. I just want to be consistent with every event that we have that we, that falls under this category. There is a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes? Six? Five one.
Five one.
Five to one.
Now to the merits, is there a motion to approve eight A? Motion by Presso, they're second.
Second.
Second by Blakely. All those in favor of approval of eight A, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Passes five one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, please.
The individuals named, about to be named have been nominated for a seat on the City Board Committee or Commission. Each nomination is subject to a confirmation by the City Council. Approval of appointment will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda. Appointments this evening are to the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, the reappointment of incumbent John Metter to a regular term ending June 30 of 2020, new member Mary E. Campbell replacing Betty Barnett to a term ending June 30, 2020, reappointing incumbent John Emery to the Equal Opportunities Commission to a regular term ending June 30, 2020, and reappointment incumbent John Watrous to the Municipal Library Board to a regular term ending June 30, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? It's been motioned by Presso, they're second, second by DeForest. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of their appointments, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, passes six zero. Item ten, council activities and upcoming events, Council Anderson, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that we did last week. One of them was a downtown parking lot study. I think all of us kind of had the notion that downtown had no spaces available, but based on the study, we actually found out we had quite a few spaces open, actually. We don't have a problem. And just a few things that the city can do even is signage. That was a simple solution to the misconception even, so that's something that hopefully we'll take advantage of and do soon. Something else that we did was we had two listening sessions in the Hackett Community and the Merrill Community. Both of those had a lot of great questions and comments, and the city staff put on a great presentation. Chief Zabalski showed up and responded to a lot of questions people had about, you know, issues they've had. And I think, you know, this is one of the times, I think you guys have all agreed too, is that we haven't seen this all happen in the same page, same page, same speed, and heading in the same direction. So thankfully, we got that going on. I think it's a great time to be in the City of Beloit. Upcoming events, I'm going to try to attend a Rock County Board meeting to just kind of see what they do and, you know, how that level of government functions. But besides that, I think we just got a bunch of meetings to attend to the next couple of weeks, so we'll be busy, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Council Blakely?
Yes, last Friday, I went on a tour of the Transit Department, of the Transfer Center here in our downtown. And then I rode a couple buses as well. Michelle Gavin, the director, the head of that department, gave me the tour. I just want to say that the buses were very timely, the drivers were cordial and professional, and the buses were clean and safe, and I think it's a good option for daytime travel around the city. This Sunday, just yesterday, I went to Bethel AME's 135th Anniversary Celebration, which was a wonderful event that included a reunion choir. So if any of you are members of that church, my congratulations to you. If anyone has a friend in that church, be sure and say happy anniversary when you run into them. It was the first African-American church in Beloit, I just learned that Sunday, by the way. And it's headed up by a wonderful pastor, Brenda Atlas. Coming up on Wednesday evening, here in the Forum at 5:45, is the Equal Opportunities Commission. And anyone from the public is welcome to sit in on it. And I would urge the group to switch lanes to send some representatives if anybody has time to be here that night. And anyone else from the public who'd like to attend, you'd be very welcome.
Thank you. Councilor DeForest?
Thank you. Well, since we're talking about switch lanes, I just want to thank you for being here. It's wonderful to see your involvement in the community, and I'm excited for the August event that's coming and the planning that's taking place for that. And I'm pleased that our city manager is working closely with you to help make that happen. So thank you for your commitment to our community, it's great to see you all. I attended quite a few events these last two weeks. One was Community Health Systems' Beloitary Community Health Center Open House. And I would like to thank all of the people that worked very hard to keep this health center open. It is a federally qualified health center, which means we can specifically provide care to people of low income or no income at all with no insurance. And so it was really vital that we keep that health center open. And so I would like to thank all of the people that helped make that happen, who worked tirelessly to advocate for it. I went to the open house and there's some beautiful new dental rooms. Many of you know that dental care is difficult for people that are in medical assistance or have badger care. And so a really beautiful facility that our patients deserve, the community deserves. I also was pleased to attend Beloit College's Powerhouse Celebration. It's so fantastic for a community to take a former power plant and turn it into a college and community recreational center. I think that speaks kudos to the kind of mindset we have and the way we have all this fresh thinking about how we can take old spaces and do new things with them. So I'm pleased that Beloit College is planning to move forward with that reuse. Also, really appreciated listening at the two community meetings on both the east side and the west side. I would like to thank, we had a great turnout at both listening sessions. I'd like to thank all of the residents who came out to speak their mind and share their thoughts with us and share their feedback about our neighborhood revitalization strategic area plan and how we're going to really make the investment in two of our city's most vulnerable neighborhoods. So pleased with the turnout, I'm pleased with the city staff, who did such an excellent job communicating, sharing our plans, and really listening to the feedback received and taking it and running with it. So thank you to all who had a part. Thank you to Mark Perry from Community Action for facilitating those events as well. He did an excellent. He did an excellent job helping to facilitate and also sharing what the nonprofit community will be doing. It's a wonderful partnership between city and nonprofit to really serve the residents in our communities. I attended Strawberry Fest, of course, at Sun Valley, was there for about five hours and really appreciated all the... Appreciate it. I only ate one dish of strawberry crepes, though, I promise.
I would share.
It was tempting to have more than one plate of strawberry crepes, but I did have some strawberry ice cream though, too, later. But I'd like to thank Sun Valley for organizing that event. I've said this before, there aren't a lot of events on the west side of the city, and so I so appreciate them that they organize this. It takes a lot of volunteer hours to do it, to draw together people, especially from the west side, and I love that they're willing to donate all the proceeds to nonprofit organizations. So thank you to Sun Valley, to that congregation, for that fantastic event. I also attended the Turtle Creek, Rock River Confluence Open House. That was that same day, so that made for a very long day for me. I'd like to thank Teresa Oldenburg for helping to organize that event. Again, a wonderful turnout for people in both Beloit and South Beloit to come out and meet at the Confluence and see the incredible nature center that is available there. Fantastic to see the transformation of our waterfront in our communities and the bridging of Beloit and South Beloit is a very special thing. I wanted to just make sure the community was aware of two particular events. One is on June 26th at 6:30 at 2400 Spring Brook. We will be meeting to review our parks and open space plan. This is really important, we want to hear from the community about what you would like to see as the priorities in our parks and our open spaces. We did send out some feedback surveys, there were some surveys available to residents, but this is another opportunity for you to come, see what we're proposing, and share your feedback. We really do want to hear from you about what's been proposed. Again, that's June 26th at 6:30. On June 28th, there will be a meeting for the Colac Neighborhood, the neighborhood that's around the Colac Educational Center, that they will be meeting to obtain feedback from the neighborhood about what they would like to see for reuse of that building. The school district is moving out of that building and would like to sell it and have it repurposed and developed, and would really like to hear from the community about what kind of uses they'd like to see in that building. And again, that's June 28th. I don't have the time written down, so we know what time that is.
I was just going to ask you that.
Is it 6:30, Julie? Thank you. 6:30 at the Colac Center. So please, especially if you live in that neighborhood, we want you to come and share with us what you feel comfortable about having in your neighborhood, June 28th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Forbait?
I too got the great opportunity to go only to one, but to the Merrill Neighborhood Listening Session. I'm just so pleased, over the years in my past jobs, it's always so hard. You hold a meeting and you want to have people there, and so often you don't get a whole lot of people. But it was thrilling to have the people from the neighborhood say what they're already doing, what they need, but more importantly, how in fact can the most information get to everybody? So that was really good. I also have to say, I'm very pleased with the emphasis of the police department talking about going up and meeting everybody who is there. I think that's just essential. Go knock on the door. Go know who's living in the houses and, anyway, everything seemed to me on a positive note. And so we can't forget this. But I don't think that the community action and the police department and the programs are going to be forgetting what they indicated that they would be able to do, so I'm thrilled about that. Also, I had the opportunity to spend an inordinate amount of time talking about bike paths and walking transportation in our area. As you can probably tell, looking at me, I'm not a biker, and I should be more of a walker than I am, but it's thrilling because you hear now all kinds of people thrilled about being able to use their bike in different ways and in different neighborhoods and through connections and to take their children and their grandchildren to places. So I'm very proud to see how we're taking a look at the total transportation in the city of Beloit, including, of course, bus and roads, which we all think of, but including pedestrian paths and bike paths. So it's a wonderful way to look at the big picture. Very pleased with it. And then one small note on the Confluence. You know, we all talk about when we're trying to do a really good job, taking a look at best practices, you know? What has somebody else done really good? And then can we look at it and tweak it for us? Well, the Confluence is exactly that. The urban ecological center in Milwaukee is the best practice that we took a look at, and we're not replicating it, but we're taking their success and the way they know how to do some things and bringing it here and making it our own. So there's been a lot of thought that's gone into this, and again, you're right, Teresa Oldenburg is fabulous, fabulous. She's the perfect person to be out in the front on that. So lots of good things happening, and I'm excited about it and pleased to be part of it.
Thank you. Councilor Presso?
As you no doubt tell, we've been rather busy the last couple of weeks. Lots of meetings, lots of workshops, and lots of things happening in the area. I'll go back to Clint mentioning the community engagement, community development engagement meetings at the Beloit Historical Society and Merrill School. I was able to make the one at the Beloit Historical Society, and I have to say, I've been to a lot of, you know, outreach, community communications, conversations with the community events in the last couple of years, and this was probably the most well-attended, with a really interesting and broad group of people with lots of different interests, having a really nice discussion. I mean, it was really amazing to see so many different people with different points of view and coming from different angles about our neighborhoods, all talking in the same room and have some really good things happening there. So that was a really interesting meeting and super well-attended. I walked in late, and I had to look for a place to sit because it was, all the chairs were taken. So that was pretty amazing. And then following that, we had the opening of the Confluence last week on weekend. I was there on Tuesday for like preview, we're trying to organize a photographers' group to have some photography program there, and so I got asked to help on that and if I can, and it's really amazing to see what we're doing. And while I was there, somebody said, "Well, you know," they're looking around the other streets there, said, "nobody ever does anything around this area. You know, why are we doing this?" And I said, "Well, because nobody's ever done anything around here. That's why we're doing it." And people don't realize that before the Hendricks family decided to put all that into Riverside Drive and do all that, there was already a Beloit 2000. There was already a riverfront plan. There was already a vision that communicated to people about the riverfront redevelopment. And that was a long time ago now. We all look back and it all seems like so natural. But if that hadn't been there first, I'm not sure Ken and Diane Hendricks would have gone in there and had the, you know, the wherewithal to make that commitment without that other plan there. Same thing is true down here, a couple blocks south of us in South Beloit. And everybody's lived in this town, knows exactly what that's looked like for a long time. This may be the catalyst that changes things, and I'm hoping so. Coming up next week, I have my monthly What the Tech session at Grinnell Hall, and I've had good feedback. It's summertime, maybe we won't have too many people show up, but the fewer people that show up means the more attention I can give to that, maybe that intransigent problem somebody has. And I'm not just there to solve problems. We have one person that comes every month that just helps people, just like I do. And actually, we had a third person show up, just because she thought it sounded like fun. She used to do it for a living. So we had like four on, three on four. So we had three people helping and four people needing it. So it was very good, very good thing. It's called What the Tech. It's about your technology, and it's at Grinnell Hall. And people really like it, they respond to it well. And so we have that coming up. And then tomorrow night, get your smores on down at the Confluence. They're going to light the fire, going to have smores, and you can have my smores, because I don't like them.
Oh, my God.
And I have to conclude by one thing, and I don't want to forget, I forgot last month. My work schedule does not allow me to attend a lot of meetings between Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I miss the, all the ones with the health center and quite a few, because I just can't leave downtown Beloit because it's a very busy time for us at work. And so I regret that, and I'm sorry I can't make some of those meetings. And it's not because I don't care about what's going on, and I really do care, but I have to, I have to have time, downtime, and I have to, I have to keep, I have to keep my job going. And we need to keep helping people downtown, because it's busy. It's very busy downtown, surprise, surprise. People are coming to this town, and they're talking about day tripping to Beloit. I mean, there was a five, six thirty-something, so it was like watching The Chill on a road trip. You know, The Big Chill, you remember that movie? Anyway, so all these six people, and they came to Beloit, they rented a cabin up the river, and they spent all weekend downtown having fun. And they're from Chicago. And they were just so cool, they loved it. They had a blast. The only thing they regret is not having a boat, which they probably didn't know how to drive, anyway. But anyway, it was really cool to hear that from people, and they're coming back. Take the paddle boats. I told them, they actually asked where they could rent one, and I could not remember since we no longer have paddle and trail renting boats.
They can rent one. They can rent a kayak, too.
Where?
At the concessions.
Yeah, but they can't go out in the river with it.
But they can at least go on the grill.
Well, yeah, but they, anyway. But anyway, it's really nice to see, and I see this every weekend, I see this every week even, every, almost daily at work, people coming to town, and we should be very proud of that. And keep that in mind, when everybody gets down on this little city of ours, you know, just remember, it's a great place. We make it great. Everybody here makes it great. And don't let those people that think it's so bad, you know, get you down. Thank you.
I just sit here and listen, that's all. I just, you know, just amazing. And I say it just about at every meeting, that we have fun down here, but we get a lot of things done, and I think that's important, and I can't stress that enough, that we have individuals that we can get along and we can still argue sometime, but when we walk away from here, each one of us have the best interest of the city at heart. So the debating we do is in the best interest of the city. But I want to thank Councilor Presso for a remark that he made. We get invited to so much, so many activities, and if we don't show up, it's not because we don't care about your activity or your organization, it's we get invited to so many with other commitments. We hit which ones we can, but we value all the volunteers and everything that you do in the city, so we don't want anyone to take it lightly. So you may see one council at a event, you may not see all of us, but we want to, I personally want to thank you and appreciative of everything that you do here. But Mark, as you said, this is a great city, and we, the seven of us down here and other city staff, we have to push that. We have to make sure that individuals in the city realize that, because if you talk to individuals outside of the city, they will say what a great city we have. It's oftentimes people within your own city that will talk it down. So we got to make sure that we're doing all that we can, and I see by going out to various activities and stuff, we're doing that. So continue, I encourage you to do that, and I encourage the organizations to continue doing what you're doing. But I just like the dialogue between Mark and Sheila, and I just sit in the middle and go back and forth, so. With that, we will end item ten, move to item eleven, city manager's presentation.
We have the 2016 CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Mr. Miller.
Hello, good evening, all.
Good evening.
So each year, Baker Tilly conducts an independent audit and helps us prepare our comprehensive annual financial reports for the city. It is a very extensive process. We actually begin this back in December with preliminary audit fieldwork, and then we continue on through fieldwork into March and many, many, many discussions and phone calls and emails leading up to now, where we can finally put an end to the process and publish the CAFER in June. So with that, I would just like to, first of all, thank my staff and all other city staff and departments that have a role in putting this document together. It really does take a team effort to get this thing put together and put it together right, so that we can prepare a very well-welded document. So with that, I would like to introduce Carla Gogan, who is a partner with Baker Tilly, and she will walk you through the audit presentation.
Good evening, and thank you. I am Carla Gogan, a partner with Baker Tilly, and we are going to go through the financial statement highlights. There are some new faces this year, and as customary in the past, please feel free to jump in with questions as we go. Don't hesitate to jump in and don't feel like you need to wait until the end. And so... Well, we're going to focus on the report to city council, and Eric handed that out ahead of time. This is about 12 pages, where we're going to go through what is covered in a 180-page document. This document that Eric referred to as your comprehensive annual financial report, or we refer to it as your CAFER. There are a number of things within this document that I will highlight, just from an overall perspective. It is in draft at this point. Typically, I present to you at your first July meeting. I had a conflict, and so Eric accommodated my schedule, you all accommodated my schedule, to actually present to you what our draft financial results. However, we're issuing the financial statements in final on Friday, and there's nothing that will change from what we're going to talk about tonight from what you're going to see on Friday. So I appreciate you allowing that. Within your comprehensive annual financial statement, and I'm just going to touch on a few highlights, you have the audit opinion. That's what you're hiring us to do, which is the independent audit, as Eric mentioned. And then I'll go through these highlights in just a moment. Right now, I'm not speaking to any particular page within the document that I sent out. But the independent auditor's report, we will be issuing an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that you can receive on your financial audits, what you've received in the past, and it's what you should expect to receive. Also included within the comprehensive annual financial report, which will be available to everyone online, is what's referred to as your management's discussion and analysis. And that is a narrative that management drafts, and it talks about factual information, but it really summarizes what's included within your financial statements. So as you're looking at your comprehensive annual financial report, I'd recommend that you focus in on the MDNA. It's a nice document. Then you have the voluminous financial audit. But then also included, the city does submit its financial statements to the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, for a certificate of excellence. And as a result of that, there's a lot of additional requirements that go into preparing the city's financial statements. And included within that is a lot of statistical information that the city provides, and that's included within the document as well. So there's a lot in there. And again, what I'm trying to do tonight is boil it down into 12 pages. I do want to thank management getting ready for an annual audit. I've never sat on that side of the table, I've always just been the auditor, and I've been the auditor for the last, I've been in this profession for 25 years. I work with about 35 municipalities around the state of Wisconsin, but I do know from talking with my clients that it is no small undertaking getting ready for the audit. So certainly want to extend my thank you to the finance department, as well as the many departments that we reach out to as a part of the financial audit process. So tonight, we're going to focus on the general fund, which is your main operating fund of the city, and that's on page two of the document that you have. The general fund is a governmental fund, meaning that it is primarily supported by tax revenue and grant dollars. And we're going to focus on that tonight and go through a couple metrics. We're going to talk about the debt position of the city, and then we're going to wrap things up tonight with some information regarding your enterprise funds or your utility funds, and those are financed, the operations primarily with user charges. But we start with your general fund, which is your main operating fund of the city. Within this fund, you have your general government, your general operations, you have your public safety, including police and fire, you have public works. So you have the assets of the general fund, which is primarily made up of some cash, receivables, less your liabilities, your payables, and what you have left is fund balance, and that's at the top of this page. And I would equate fund balance, if you try to equate that to your personal financial situation, it's essentially your net worth at the end of the year is what you have here is your net, is your fund balance, or what remains. And that fund balance is broken into different segments, with the first being non-spendable. So these are assets of the city, but they're not in spendable form. And we do show comparative information, and that did go down from one year to the next. This is primarily... This is primarily made up of inventory. So the city has some inventory in its General Fund at the end of the year. You're not in the business of selling inventory, so it's, it's an asset of yours, but it's not readily liquid. And also included in that is a loan that the General Fund has made to the golf course that has existed for a number of years, and that exists in there as well. It is an asset, but it's not a readily liquid asset. What you have left is your unassigned fund balance, and these are monies that don't have any strings attached, if you will. These are monies that are available within the city's General Fund, primarily needed for financial stability. As you're meeting with your bond advisors, as you're meeting with Moody's, the Raiders, they look to see that the city has a certain level of fiscal health, and one thing that they'll look at is how much you have in your unassigned fund balance. The city has a policy in terms of how much that should be, and that's really critically important, is that you have financial policies really to, for you, in order to do your job, and for management to essentially carry out your plans. And the city's policy is that it is to have 15% of operating revenue, General Fund operating revenue, or whichever number's higher, or three months of operating expenses. And so the city's threshold at the end of 2016 was about 7.5 million. And that's what your policy said you'd need to have an unassigned fund balance, and you had 8.3 million. And it did go up from the prior year, partially because you did have a net income within the General Fund. As you walk down the page, at the bottom, you'll see net revenues of 83,000. That compares to about 335,000 of a deficit last year, so certainly improved results over 15. And also, you had planned a balanced budget. So you, you basically anticipated breaking even, and you really did. I mean, when you look at how you ended up the year, you were at 1.8, you were right within 2% of what you had budgeted for revenues and for expenditures. So you were, you were right on in terms of your operating results. So again, if we go back to the middle of the page, you can see the undesignated percent of annual expenditures was just over 26%. So healthy, healthy fund balance position for your General Fund. Moving on to the next page, another metric that we look at is general obligation debt. And both of these metrics, we're going to look at a graphic in a moment, where you're going to see some trend analysis. It's important to look at where you were at the end of the year, end of the audit year, but it's also important to look at what the trends are, and we're going to look at that in just a moment. But the general obligation debt outstanding, geo-debt is secured by your taxing authority. And so as you're issuing general obligation debt, you're limited to 5% of the city's equalized value. So to the extent the city is growing, that creates debt capacity. To the extent that the city is not growing or constricting, that's going to limit how much that you can borrow for debt. And we're going to look at a graphic in a moment to show that. Certainly with the downturn in the economy in 2008, most of my clients, if not all, showed a constriction in terms of their geo-debt capacity. You don't have a lot of control over that, other than obviously your economic plans for the city do impact that. You are at 63% of your debt limit. And we're going to look at a graphic in a moment, which is going to show that in terms of a historical trend. I mentioned the Internal Service Funds here, because the Internal Service Funds are funds that primarily are related to insurance, where you utilize those funds in order to accumulate costs associated with general liability, health insurance, workers' compensation, and you charge those costs back to the various departments and collect revenues within these funds. This last year, you'll see that net position went down quite significantly, and that had to do primarily with the health insurance fund. You are self-insured, and when you have some bad claims history, basically, that can have an impact on, on the Internal Service Funds.
As a bit of an aside, if I may insert, I was recently, had an opportunity to speak with some of my peers in cities, and this was not a scientific survey, but I found it interesting that several of the managers and mayors I was talking with from cities across the state also had really high claims years in, in the prior year. So I don't know what that's an indication of, or if that was just an anomaly, but it was, I found it interesting, and we're certainly hoping to try and turn that around.
Right. I do have a number of clients who are self-insured for health insurance, and frankly, I don't recall. We do do some comparisons and some benchmarking, you know, to see what the claims history is, and I know we looked at that. We do with the city of Beloit, and usually, from an analytics perspective, and it was consistent with what the city manager was saying, so I'm not sure really the root cause of that. Fund balance, as we talked about, so this is a graphic to show the fund balance in the General Fund. We talked about this on, on Page 2. This is just to show you a graphic in terms of your total fund balance, and the number I like to key in on is that unassigned fund balance. And you can see in 2016, you know, that had gone up from 2014 to 2015, and again in 2016. So certainly increasing in the right direction. This is just for your own benefit, just to give you, again, some explanations of what the different fund balance categories mean. This is to give you a snapshot of the General Fund I mentioned earlier. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, if you compare your actual results to budget, you exceeded budget overall. You planned, basically, to break even, and you ended up with a net income or revenues in excess of expenditures in your General Fund by about 83,000. And the next page, whether you stay on that page or the next, the next gives you a narrative as to what were some of the, the root causes of that. The largest two items within revenues being under budget, one was in the, within public safety, and basically some of the fines and forfeitures and penalties were under budget, mostly due with respect to some non-traffic fines and parking. The other was related to investments. You'll see on the, on the previous page, the line that says unrealized gain-loss on investments. You did have an unrealized loss on investments. The city holds its investments to maturity, and so this is just a function of the market, and investments do go up and down. But again, the city's intention is to hold it to maturity, in which case you're, you're not going to be recognizing a loss on investments.
Council of DeForest.
Thank you. Before we lose this point, I'm pleased to see the reduction in collection of fines and forfeitures. So this comment in no way reflects that, because I am pleased with that. However, I just want to make sure that as we're approaching our budget plans for this next year, are we being more conservative in what we anticipate for revenue from fines and forfeitures as we look at how we're spending?
We haven't even started the process yet of projecting our revenues. We've been focused on the capital plan and are just beginning the remainder of the process.
But I'm assuming we will be more conservative based on how we performed last year?
In order to do that, we're going to have accurate revenue projections, but if we sustain significant losses, there will have to be proportionate decreases in expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
And if you do look at the expenditures on the bottom of the, on the bottom of Page 7, you'll see that two areas significantly under budget, finance and administration by 418,000, and public works under budget by 325,000. So again, the expenditures came, came in under budget, so while you did come in under revenue, you still ended up in a positive position.
Could I ask?
Yes.
The reduction of fines and things like that, was that from the police? Is this partially from rentals?
It, the majority of it is from parking fines, which would be parking fines from the police department.
Okay.
And then some of your non-traffic could include other departments also, but primarily it would be the police department.
Police, okay, thank you.
Eric, did, did, what for you?
Yeah.
Did we write off a substantial amount of, of, you know, fines that, was there something that came off the books now?
No, just less tickets written.
Okay, just, just less.
I would go so far as to say, there is a direct correlation, we have a new chief, and our priority over the past two years has been to reduce violent crime and to increase our clearance rates, and we've been successful in, in doing that. However, that has had a consequence in not having that time spent on writing traffic, or writing parking tickets. We do have officers that are dedicated to that purpose, community service officers, but even at that, we've been trying to be very focused on our, our goals, but we recognize that has had a financial impact as well. Our overarching mission will remain the same, but at the same time, we're going to have to true up in the budget how much we can realistically expect to be bringing in.
I like the new direction.
Given the alternative, I'll take it.
Yeah.
And moving on to Page 8, this takes a look at debt. We talked about this earlier, about the geo-debt capacity. And the top line of this graph is your debt limit, and then the, the bottom line, the red line, is your outstanding general obligation debt. So you can see, if you look at the, the fourth line where it says percent, percent available, you'll see that that percentage has grown consistently over the last five years. So again, as we looked before, two key financial benchmarks that we look at is that unassigned fund balance, which is moving in, in the positive direction, as well as your percent available. And really what this does is it just provides you more flexibility in terms of, you know, how you choose to finance projects, as well as those unexpected things that occur. Before we move on to the enterprise funds, any questions just about the debt position, the city's operations, before I move into the, the water, the sewer, the transit, and stormwater utilities?
Mark.
Does this trend that we're seeing here match up with other communities, similar?
What we're seeing in other communities...
Right now, with the market, yeah.
What we are seeing a bounce back, I would say, in terms of equalized values are stabilizing or improving, so that is a trend that we're seeing.
Okay, this, that post-2008, finally seeing some benefit and recovery trend?
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, then moving on to Page 9, this is your water utility, and the first line is to show the consumption or water sold. And you'll see that this has historically been going down, and consistent with pretty much every community we work with, we're seeing that consumption come down. People are buying energy, or, you know, water-saving items, whether that be toilets and so forth. They are conserving water to the extent they can. The reality, though, is a lot of your costs are potentially fixed. And so while the, the consumption is going down, you know, a lot of your expenses are fixed. If you look at your operating revenues, they stayed relatively flat. As you look at operating expenses, they did spike last year, and that was related to the water tower painting, so you had 3.9 million of expenses last year, and that's now come back down. As we walk down the page, we look at three different metrics with respect to the water utility. The first being unrestricted cash, so kind of like unassigned fund balance, looking at unrestricted cash, are monies that you have available to you to deal with operating type items that come up. And we would recommend having a minimum of three months of unrestricted cash, and you're at just over two months at the end of 16. However, as I mentioned, your expenses for water tower painting in 15, that did draw down some of the cash. You also implemented new water rates in 2017, so I would expect that that unrestricted cash is going to go back up. Your rate of return, the water utility is regulated by the Public Service Commission, and as a part of the rate process, they tell you what your authorized rate of return is going to be. And in the past, you'll see that, for the past three, four years, actually, you were operating under what was authorized by the Public Service Commission. Now, as a part of that ratemaking process, again, that would be trued up, they would tell you what you're authorized to, to achieve, and based on the forecasted information that you provide them, it would be expected that you would be in and around your authorized rate of return. And then lastly, because you do issue revenue bonds, so we talked about general obligation debt before, and that's secured by the taxing authority of the city, revenue bonds are secured by, basically, the revenues of that enterprise. And so the bondholders, the individuals who, who buy the bonds, and as a part of that bond ordinance, says that you need to achieve a certain results as it relates to the bonds, and you can see that the actual results were greater than the required results. That's the last metric on this page. So again, I would expect with the new rates in place, that again, the unrestricted cash is, is going to bounce back up. Moving on to Page 10, sewer. Sewer consumption is really going to model after water. You'll see operating revenues have been fairly flat. You did increase, or did put in a rate increase in 2016, so that did bounce up a bit, and operating expenses did go down slightly in 2016. If we walk down the page and we look at the two metrics related to sewer, sewer is unregulated, so there's not going to be the, the authorized rate of return. But the other two metrics related to months of unrestricted cash, you had just under 13 months, which is very healthy. What this allows you is not only to have monies on hand for operations and unexpected things that might occur, but it also gives you flexibility if there are capital-related items that are necessary. And so instead of having to go out necessarily to borrow for those, you do have some cash on hand, so that is healthy. And then again, debt coverage, this has to do with, again, revenue bonds issued for sewer utility purposes, and that is well in excess of the required amount, so healthy from a sewer utility perspective.
Council of DeForest.
Thank you. Carla, I know you said there was a slight reduction in operating expenses, but 350,000 is, to me, a lot, so do you have a sense of where we were able to reduce our expenses in this department?
I don't offhand, but I certainly can get that information.
Okay, thank you. Maybe Harry can tell me later. Thank you. That's great, by the way.
Moving on to the stormwater utility. The stormwater utility is billed a bit differently, based on equivalent residential units, having to do with impervious surfaces, parking lots, and so forth. Again, you increased rates on the beginning of 2016, so you are seeing an uptick in revenues for 2016, and the expenditures, expenses have come down. Some of the expenses are driven by this fund, does provide funding to the equipment replacement fund, so that does feed into its expenditures in terms of equipment that it purchases for stormwater purposes. Again, as we walk down the page, the two metrics, again, this is an unregulated utility, meaning you regulate the utility. You don't have a state body who's regulating it over the top of you. Unrestricted cash on hand, about six and a half months of unrestricted cash, which is sufficient for the storm, and again, meeting your debt coverage for the stormwater utility. And the last utility we'll talk about is the transit system. And there was some discussion earlier regarding rider, riding the transit system. You'll see the very first line is ridership, and ridership is down in 2016, and that does go with an industry trend. Anytime fuel prices come down, you know, you're going to see typically, you know, at times your ridership go down as well.
We just changed all the routes, too.
That would, that could certainly make a difference. But then, as you look at revenues and operating expenses, really have stayed, you know, very stable over the last, last five years, so stable operations with respect to transit. Before I move on to the other deliverable tonight, any questions, anything we didn't talk about that you were hoping we would talk about, anything we've covered that you have questions about?
Council of DeForest.
The other deliverable, do you mean you're going to talk about deficiencies in control?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Before we go to that, I would just like to ask the city manager if at some point we could get some kind of report. I would, I'm curious to see student ridership on our buses, to see where we are over the last few years, or is it an increase or decrease? And then, if it is a decrease, what are we doing to increase it or make sure that it maintains?
I'll certainly work with our transit director on that. I know that some policy changes from the school district have impacted our ridership, so we'll want to be sure to footnote how those policy changes have created some ebbs and flows.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Anyone else?
If I, sorry. If I could just use this as an opportunity to get on my soapbox and say, this is why I think it's really important that the city council meet with the school board occasionally, because it would have been really nice for us to talk with them about the impact of some of those decisions they made on our, our transit capacity. So I think this is a really key, teachable moment about that. We need to have meetings with other bodies. Thank you.
Then I would like to move to... Then I would like to move to the other document that you have, which is the communication to those charged with governance and management. I believe this was in your packet.
It's page, um...
Page twelve. It begins on page one twelve.
Thank you. Just a couple overall comments, and then I'll certainly take any questions that you have. As a part of the audit process, we do not audit the control environment of the city, but we do, we are required to gain an understanding of the control environment, and we look at key transaction cycles, various receipting cycles, expenditure cycles, the bill paying essentially, financial reporting, and we look at that to identify where there may be some deficiencies in controls. And so this communication is broken down into four segments, just for the benefit of those who are new, new to the, the council. Pages two through four, excuse me, two through five, are items that we've identified as material weaknesses, and we are required to put these particular items in writing. Management has provided a response to each of these items. Then the next segment of the letter is pages six, seven and eight, and this is really just intended to invite you to provide us feedback. As Eric mentioned, we're essentially auditing the city year-round. We start the audit process, you know, in the fall. We start planning really in early fall, scheduling, also looking at what, what is happening within the, you know, the, from a national perspective as it relates to state and local governments. We're looking at those municipalities within the state of Wisconsin and so forth, and then we are doing preliminary fieldwork and final fieldwork. And this is really just, you do hire us as your independent auditor, and so if there are issues or things that you feel we need to know about, this is to encourage you to do that. Then starting on page, page nine, and that goes through page, page twelve, are some items that are, some are more informational in nature, and others are items that we're not necessarily required to put in writing, but we just feel that they're of interest and should be communicated to you as a city council, and then the remainder of this report are some required communications that we, as your auditor, are required to put in writing. But consistent with prior years, each year we evaluate the prior year points, and in some of these, you'll see if you compared last year's letter to this year's letter, some of those items have gone away, as well as some of the points in here still remain only because they weren't addressed for the entire year. So unless it's been addressed for the entire year, we leave it in here. So there are some of these that I would expect as well that would come out during the twenty seventeen audit process. Not only are we preparing or auditing your financial statements, we also do a compliance audit over the grant funding that you receive, and Beloit does receive significant federal and state grant funding, and so we are also, as a part of our work, we're also looking at your compliance with grant funding, and those findings are included within our documentation as well. What we've done in the past is really just invited you, if there are certain points or questions that you have, I'd invite those questions at this time.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Well, with nine years now, I think this is the first time that I can say I am so pleased. Looking year to year at our deficiencies in, especially our internal controls, I am so pleased. Thank you, Eric, to you and your staff for the work you've done. I'm thrilled that the risk assessment request is not on this report any longer. That's something that really concerned me in the past, and I see that we have sufficient risk assessment strategies, interventions in place, so thank you for that, so we can prevent fraud amongst our staff. You know, some of these pieces here, we can't help because we have limited staff, so obviously our segregation of duties can be challenging, so there's, there's nothing here that's a surprise or that's things that, you know, would be expected for staff of our size. So I'm thrilled with such a clean management report and response, so thank you so much to your staff, Eric.
Listen, I noted-
You just turned yours off, you just needed to turn it back on.
I noted that the reorganization between the two departments has really helped as far as having the number of people to be able to do good things, so I just thought it was something to, well frankly, save some money, but I know it really obviously has helped with the quality of the work, so that, I want to compliment everybody on that.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would just, I would just add, looking at the previous presentation, the financial data and seeing the, the, the report here on the controls, internal environment stuff was really refreshing, and it shows that we've got a new management team and there's management changes taking place, and they're trending in the right direction, and it's very positive, considering the challenges we face every year going forward, and what I know from what happened before, I didn't sit up here, but I did watch at home on TV. Anyway, you know, I kept an eye on things, and, and to see this, this moving so smoothly and fluidly, considering all the challenges with personnel and management and managing our resources, I'm, I'm really impressed, and I think that's a tribute to the, the management team and the new, the new organization, so thank you, Lori, and thank you, Eric, and everybody else, you Lori, and that, so you're all doing good. Thank you.
Yes, they absolutely deserve the credit, and I will say that, you know, as a part of the audit planning process, you know, management was very, you know, very confident and persistent that they were going to knock off and take care of and resolve a number of these points, and so I would expect that some of these, again, will be, will come off next year.
Whenever I see the IT staff mentioned in these reports, I go, oh my God. But no, they're, because I know they're, they're really a small group, and they've got a lot to do and a lot to, lot to manage, and it's a tough environment because I'm a techie guy, so.
And every year, we look at different things, and so, and that's part of our job, is make sure that we audit with skepticism and change our approach every year, so don't be surprised if you see some new things come up as a part of that process, but, but again, they're certainly being very diligent about addressing what's here.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Again, if you have questions, don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve A, please.
We have a resolution amending the two thousand seventeen Water Resources Division operating budget.
Come on down.
Hi, good evening. Audit with skepticism, I like that. That's good. And also, before I go, I want to echo the counselor's discussion on the confluence. My wife and I were down there this weekend, we're always looking for new places to sit down by the river in Reed, and that's going to be perfect, we love it, so it's awesome. As a result of a recent plea agreement, Illinois, an Illinois contractor was ordered to pay to the city restitution in the amount of one hundred thirty thousand five hundred dollars. The funds have been received and allocated to a revenue account in the sewer utility's wastewater treatment facility operating budget. The sewer utility requests that the twenty seventeen operating budget be amended to allocate the one hundred thirty thousand five hundred dollars to the budget's contracted services labor line item and to be used for a clarifier upgrade of the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay.
And I did that without my glasses.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion by DeForest, second by Fortback, any questions or comments?
I was just gonna-
Counselor DeForest.
I was just gonna, oh.
I can defer to you, Mark, go ahead.
Get your glasses.
Yeah, turn on.
I was just going to ask the, the, this is a utility specific to the sewer, sewer for operations, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to be using another portion of the water operations, is there? This is a, I don't, I guess I don't understand the allocation of this money or how it's, how it's, can it go somewhere else, or could it go somewhere else? Do we have to do it now, that kind of thing? I don't-
Right, the funds are being replaced from, back in two thousand eleven and prior to two thousand eleven, we had an incident where funds were stolen from the city.
Gotcha.
These are replacing those funds, and they were from the sewer utility.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so that's why they were allocated to the sewer utility fund.
Okay, so this is a restitution from that.
Exactly.
So we were making up loss. Okay, thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
I just was going to make that clarification for the public, and that was me, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, there is a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes six zero. Item twelve B, please.
It's a resolution approving the two thousand sixteen wastewater utility Wisconsin compliance maintenance annual report.
Part two.
And I know we have three new counselors this year, and I know Sheila is one of her favorite when it comes to the utility, but the compliance maintenance annual report is essentially the report card for the wastewater utility. It has to go before the council, so to keep not only the council informed, but the citizens and taxpayers of the city of Beloit, how well their wastewater treatment plant and its investment is doing. So it's a report card. We, again, scored straight a's, so it comes before you for review and approval as part of the DNR requirements. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion and a second?
Motion?
Motion by DeForest, second by Blakely, Counselor DeForest.
I'd like to make a comment, sorry, I just feel like I'm being this teachable moment teacher tonight, but I want to make sure my colleagues understand how critical, it's not like this is, you know, glamorous or sexy, but this is absolutely critical to water safety and to water quality, and having this kind of report card is such an important indicator of our city's vitality. Our businesses, our residents and the natural environment require that we care deeply about what we're doing with our water, so, and we've seen lots of other communities that are remiss and neglect how they handle their water, and they end up polluting the environment and poisoning their residents, and so I just want to emphasize that this is a critical area, and I want to thank Harry and his staff for doing such incredible work. This report card, year after year, reflects that commitment, and it's an important one, so thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Counselor Preschel?
I just wanted to ask, because this is also very critical for development, considering our food industries and stuff.
Absolutely.
And we're so dependent on that, and it's grown, and that's actually part of our future, it continues to be part of our future. What capacity are we at right now, and I know it's in here somewhere, but I couldn't find it.
Capacity, we're roughly fifty percent of capacity. If you look at the wastewater plant, we can essentially add another full wastewater plant out there. We're, because of our, because of the heavy loadings for our industry, when you look at our overall capacity, we have a lot of capacity at the plant. In fact, we're looking to re-rate that capacity, we're in the middle of a study right now to garner even more, but because we do have industries, Frito-Lay, Hormel, that are, are very strong, affluent, it reduces, you know, the, the amount allocated that, if you will, a normal city would have. We have ample capacity for our industries to grow, for our commercials to grow, and for our residential to grow.
Okay.
We have ample capacity to do that. We should be re-rated for even more because of the performance of the plant, given we're only using roughly half the plant.
That's right, that's what I wanted to make that clear, because it's really important to our economic development and our continued growth.
And we keep investing, and we keep reinvesting back in the wastewater facility, absolutely critical, because I know where we started in eighty-two. That's when I began with the city of Beloit, and I knew where we were, and I'm sure many people have institutional memory of where we were back in eighty-two, and we've come a very long way.
Oh, yeah.
Extremely proud to have been part of that.
It's quite controversial getting that plant online.
Yes, I remember when I stood right in front of here and, and had to face the council to tell them why it was important that we maintain it and that, yes, we can do that. We may be driving a Volkswagen, but we can still drive a Cadillac, and we are.
And it, it was important to Blake's downtown redevelopment.
Absolutely. It was critical to all the development that you see.
Yeah.
We were under sewer moratoriums back in the eighties, and you can't grow if you're under a moratorium, so. I know Lori wants cookies, so I will stop right now.
One man.
Exactly.
Counselor DeForest.
Well, this is why I just feel like we have to thank the, the foresight of previous city councils, and this is where as city council, our decisions are so impactful, because if we don't take the long-range view and look at the investment we need to make in our infrastructure to allow our city to grow, it hurts us, so I'm, I'm so thankful that we have a progressive-minded body that, that looks to the future and our sustainability, so kudos to that city council that despite that controversy, despite the concerns about raising taxes and all that came with it, they had the, the forethought to say, this is important to our city, we have to take this, this hit, so grateful for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Now, there is a motion, I believe, and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes six zero.
Thank you.
Item twelve C, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the city of Beloit to apply for the two thousand seventeen bulletproof vest partnership grant and future BVD, BVP grants.
You're on.
Thanks. Chief Zee was unable to be here tonight, asked that I come in, talk a little bit about the bulletproof, think about that word for a second, bulletproof. Grant opportunity offered through the Department of Justice. We last participated back in two thousand and twelve, please don't ask why we stopped, because I don't have an answer for that one. But if you look at the numbers that you see listed in the Cat Mollins-authored staff study, you can see that as we move forward and forward think, we need to find ways to offset some of the costs at which we incur. We currently have seventy-three officers, each one has a mandated, mandated issued vest that they must wear on a five-year rotation plan, and we're asking for a resolution in order to apply for the grant. It's a fifty percent match. You can draw on that money up to two years, but you can apply every year if you exhaust your funds. The numbers at the bottom will show the savings that we're looking at, and those are only for the projected retirements that we, excuse me, that we can forecast out.
There a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Preschel, second by DeForest, questions, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Is, and this might be a silly question, but I just want to make sure, is there, is there any sense in capitalizing on receiving the grant and trying to purchase more at one time because we get some cost savings from such a bulk purchase, or is, is our ability to receive the grant in jeopardy in future years, or is that kind of an ill employed?
No, it doesn't quite work that way. If you think about it, every vest issued has a five-year lifespan. So if in twenty, um, pick one, in twenty seventeen, I think we're looking at seven vests.
Okay.
We'll purchase seven vests, because those are the ones that are expiring, so twenty eighteen will have a different number, twenty nineteen.
And we have a pretty good likelihood of receiving the grant in subsequent?
Yes, because we're a small agency, is what they refer, and, and we're-
Okay.
Small agencies are priorities, and the grant's not available to state or federal agencies.
And so I'm, I'm assuming, because since we're giving our approval, that we will continue to do this on an ongoing basis, we won't need any prompting from us to make sure this happens and not relaxes and like it did in the past?
Absolutely, I can't explain what happened after two thousand twelve.
Okay.
However, yeah, we're looking forward-thinking for seventeen eighteen and beyond.
Fantastic, thank you.
City manager.
Also wanted to point out that this provides us with the ongoing permission to apply for that grant, which we will be doing on an annual basis, so that we can get those matching dollars into our operating budget.
Thanks, boss.
So, so we're not reauthorizing it every year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not unless there's a substantive change.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes six zero. Item thirteen, it's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Preschel, second by Anderson, all in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes six zero. Thank you, we are adjourned from this meeting, we're enter into, the council will immediately follow this meeting, enter into a workshop on the twenty eighteen budget process here in the forum, we will begin in two minutes. Thank you.